I ask you all to please rise for the invocation. Tonight's invocation will be given by Pastor William Parsons of Redeemer Lutheran Church, and I'll ask you to remain standing for the Pledge of Legions.
Let us pray, in the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Ghost. Amen. Heavenly Father, guardian and keeper of your people, watch over those who are entrusted with Fairhope's administration and its government. Make them pure and honest, keep them from temptation and bribery, from favoritism or prejudice, from indolence or negative or neglect of their duties. Create in them an earnest desire to serve faithfully, attend to their efforts, that their work may not suffer from mediocrity. Permit them to experience the joys of noble service completed for a grateful people. Encourage cooperation from those who are served and from those who helped to serve. Use every willing service and every effort to put forth good government. Bless the rule of your people, that your will may be accomplished among them, and promote all things for the good of the kingdom of your son, in whose name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Legions.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Parsons. Appreciate you. All right. First order of business is to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting, the work session, and the agenda meetings held on the ninth of November. Any additions, changes, deletions to those minutes?
Make the motion, we approve the minutes.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as submitted. Any discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay. Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Thank you, council. Mayor Sullivan, your report, please.
Yeah, so there's just, I just have a few things. First, I want to thank Jessica Sawyer and her department, Richard Johnson and Public Works, Mike Allison and the Electric Department, and the Police Department for their assistance with the tree lighting celebration this past week. I thought it went really well. We tried our best to host an event where social distancing was allowed and where we were doing the things that we needed to do to provide that traditional event for our residents here in Fairhope. Moving forward, we are making some modifications to the Christmas parade. Coming up on Friday, December the 4th, we will have actually a reverse parade where the participants, the floats will be a static display and cars will actually drive through the parade. We will make some posts on social media and get that information out in the next week or so to let people know about the parade and how that's going to work. But it's going to be held on Section Street between Magnolia and Morphe. So we're looking forward to it. It's a way for us to move forward with this, you know, event for our residents and to bring some normalcy back to the holidays. So just a little change there. The other thing I just wanted to mention is that we are starting a gas project in the Fruit Nut area. We'll be starting that on Pier Street, and it is for us to do some, just some maintenance on the service to the homes down there in Fruit Nut. We're going to actually change out about 400 services. So that will be starting. We have information going on about that. Homeowners will be notified by tags being put on their doors when they're going to have their service repaired. So I want to make sure everybody knows about that, and also that we are starting a paving project here in Fairhope. There's a long list of streets that are being paved, and we'll also be putting that information out for the residents, but we are starting on Patlin, and we'll move to, you know, just some different areas around town. And if anybody has any questions about that, you can call Public Works, call the warehouse, and just wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Sullivan. All right. Item number three, public participation for agenda items. If you'd like to approach the council for agenda items five through 32, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. We'll give you three minutes to speak. Okay. We'll close public participation for agenda items, and I'll remind everybody that we'll have another chance at the conclusion of tonight's meeting for public participation for non-agenda items. Council comments. Councilman Martin.
You know, I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. I want to kind of piggyback on the mayor as far as our decision to proceed with the lighting of the tree. You know, we tried, you know, didn't quite give the perception of what we were looking for as far as the look that we were looking for. We were hoping that people would social distance, but it didn't happen. But with that, I also agree that with the modifications with the Christmas parade, we don't have to totally shut things down. We just have to adapt and overcome, and I like the adaptations that we're doing as far as the Christmas is concerned. It's just something that I wanted to say publicly, that we are really looking out for the best interest of our residents.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Brown?
Yeah, just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and safe travels to and from your destination. That's it.
Councilman Boone?
I guess I want to say the same thing. Happy Thanksgiving and holidays, and y'all be careful out there.
Yeah.
The only comment I'll make is I'll say happy Thanksgiving as well, so I'm not the lone person not to. But I do want to let you know, I meant to say this at the beginning of the meeting, is I want to pull Agenda Items 18 and 19, the procurement of the fireworks for the New Year's Eve celebration, and also the budget for the New Year's Eve celebration. And the reason I want to do that is because if we pass those two resolutions, those are actionable items, and I want to get in the habit of things that we, you know, that should be enacted to be enacted, and those things that maybe aren't going to be enacted not to be enacted. So we have about eight days. I don't know that anything will change in the next eight days with COVID, but if they do, we can, we can call a quick meeting and have a five-minute meeting and approve those two. But it's better to wait than to try to undo procurements. My concern is that if we were to authorize the company to procure those fireworks, and they may watch this meeting and see that, and then they not be used, and there is a shelf life, as Councilman Boone pointed out prior to the meeting, we were talking about it, it can get moisture and humidity in them and go bad. So I would rather just wait and approve them at such time that we know that we're going to have that. And I would say that I think that there's a, and speaking to the mayor, I think that there is a slim chance that that would happen, and chances of that not happening are probably much greater than chances of it happening.
Okay. With that, I'll close council comments. We'll move to item five, which is an ordinance to declare the certain real property at 451 Piccon Avenue of the City of Fairhope is not needed for public or municipal purposes in response to an offer to lease the property from November 21st, 2020 through December 21st, 2020. Can I ask somebody to introduce the ordinance?
Introduce it.
Okay. I would also, I believe, Mayor, you covered this in the work session.
Actually, Kevin did, but I can, Councilman Boone did, but I can tell you what it's about. So the KUER Mardi Gras organization, which has a barn next door to this property, which is, we call it the pecan building, but it's at 451 Piccon, we have a large portion of that building that is not being utilized at this time. It's open, because typically we've used it for recycling services. So we've been able to move that over to the warehouse when we weren't doing recycling. So we're allowing them to put their floats in there while they have their roof repaired from damages from Hurricane Sally. So just having them store them there for one month. We've done this before when we've leased that building for filming, and so we were able to do that for a set cost, and so that's what that ordinance relates to.
Is it my understanding, Mayor, that the monthly amount in this lease is actually a little greater than the monthly amount for the movie production company?
It is.
And that this will be much more passive than that activity?
Correct.
Okay. All right. I want to ask you, because if you do see that it is November 21st, which is behind us, if we can go ahead and if I can have a motion to suspend the rules and vote on this tonight?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, a second to suspend the rules and vote for immediate consideration. Okay. Any discussion? Okay. Hearing none. Clerk, will you call the question, please?
Council President.
Aye.
Place two.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Can I have a motion for final adoption, please?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion, a second for final adoption. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none. Clerk, will you call the question?
Council President.
Aye.
Place two.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Thank you, council. Item number six is a resolution that public improvements indicated herein for Battle Strace at the Colony Phase Seven are hereby accepted for public maintenance and authorize Mayor Sullivan to execute the maintenance agreement between the City of Fairhope and the Teachers Retirement System of Alabama. Does anybody need Hunter to cover any more of this, which is routine, excepting other streets and right-of-ways and the maintenance? Okay. If not, I'll entertain a motion to pass this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay. Motion carries. Thank you, council. Item number seven is a resolution that public improvements indicated herein for the Hilltop Subdivision Phase One are hereby accepted for public maintenance subject to the bond, posted and authorizes Mayor Sullivan to execute the maintenance and guarantee agreement between the City of Fairhope and Two Hands Design and Development, also known as the Subdivider. Also, Hunter will be here to discuss this. If you have any questions for him, I think this was discussed in the work session as well. And I'll entertain a motion to pass this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay. Motion carries. Thank you, council. Item made is a resolution, the city council hereby approves the recommendation of Mayor Sherri Sullivan for the City of Fairhope's pending litigation and all current legal services, and you should have all of those recommendations in front of you, council. I think that she had some pretty good discussions, the way I understand it. I've been made aware of those, and I tend to agree with all of those as well. So thank you for doing that, Mayor Sullivan. Can we entertain a motion to approve these recommendations?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right. Motion carries. Thank you, council. Item nine is a resolution, the city council hereby authorizes Mayor Sullivan to execute the Second Amendment of the Joint Use Pole Attachment Agreement with Bell South Telecommunications Doing Business as AT&amp;T Alabama. And Mr. Allison is here to discuss this. I believe that it's an increase in the amount of revenue received from these pole attachments from 2022. Can I get a motion to draw authorization to execute the Second Amendment?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay. Motion carries. Thank you, council. Item 10 is a resolution, the city council approves the selection of PAYNE management, and for those of you in the audience, that's P-A-Y-N-E. Doing Business as PAYNE Environmental Services to perform professional consulting services for water and wastewater risk and resilience assessment and preparation of emergency response plan for the water and wastewater systems to meet the requirements associated with the American Water Infrastructure Act, and authorize Mayor Sullivan to negotiate a fee schedule and establish a not-to-exceed-limit with this firm. And Jason's here to discuss this. I believe that this would be brought back to us, clerk, for a final approval.
Correct.
Okay. Any questions, council, for Jason? Okay. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the selection.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay. Motion carries. Thank you, council. Item number 11 is a resolution, the city council approves the selection of Sawgrass Consulting to perform professional consulting services for the proposed Morphe Avenue Substation Site Plan and redesign of the existing detention pond for the Electric Department, and hereby authorizes Mayor Sullivan to negotiate a fee schedule and establish a not-to-exceed-limit with this firm. And Michael Allison is here to discuss this as well. I believe this was discussed in the work session. Anybody have any questions for Michael? Okay. All right. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the selection and allow the mayor to negotiate the fee schedule and establish a not-to-exceed-limit.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none. I do have a question, real quick. Michael? Michael. Oh, there you are. Is this the same, this is the same consulting firm that's been working with us on all of our, or is it not? This is the detention pond, so this is not the electrical?
This is the civil part, not the electric.
This is the civil part of it. That's right. Okay. All right. Very good. Any other questions? Okay. If not, all those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 12 is a resolution, the city council approves the agreement between the City of Fairhope and Goodwin Mills in Kaywood for professional engineering services for the preliminary engineering services for the turn lane and traffic signal upgrades at the intersection of Gayford and Greeno Road for the Aldott Project. And you see the numbers there, the Baldwin County Project, and you see that number, traffic light installation, which is federally funded and also Eastern Shore MPO slash federal aid funded in an amount not to exceed $91,821. Want to entertain a motion to pass this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Mr. Johnson's here to discuss this, I believe. There he is, back there.
Mm-hmm. We talked about it.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Johnson? Mr. Johnson, about when do you think they're going to undertake this?
I hate that you missed my explanation of how we got to this point. Actually, we are scheduled for our PS and E review on December 2nd with Aldott, which is kind of the final step before they approve final plans. So I know that the turn lanes at Twin Beach and Greeno are scheduled to let in January by Aldott, but we should be able to be not far behind for Gayford Road as well. And I think our goal is to hit the letting so construction occurs when school's not in. So get all that done in the spring and have the contracts ready to go, and the contractor cut loose the first of June so that they can work over the two and a half months of summer outside of school traffic. So that's the goal. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Richard.
Clerk, I have a motion and a second.
Yes, you do.
Okay. Any further discussion, council? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay. Motion carries. You know, I should have mentioned this in my council comments. I do want to bring something up since we're talking about MPO projects. Is that Mayor Sullivan, who's newly appointed to serve on the ES MPO, and I have already started some discussions with the Eastern Shore MPO to possibly accelerate the roundabout that we would like to install at 104 Veterans and Section Street? I think that it's scheduled for 2023, but there may be an opportunity to move that up a year or two. So we're working on that. I should have mentioned that earlier. Okay. All right. Item 13 is a resolution to reject the one quote for RFQ number 002-21 for labor to assemble and erect three replacement greenhouses destroyed by Hurricane Sally for the Public Works Department, authorizes the use of a force account that would be more economically feasible for the project. So I'll entertain a motion to reject the quote.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay. Motion carries. Thank you, council. Item 14 is a resolution to reject the one quote for RFQ number 004-21 for repairs to the existing greenhouse on Section Street damaged by Hurricane Sally for the Public Works Department, and authorize the use of a force account that would be more economically feasible for the project. So I'll entertain a motion to also reject that quote.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. And the force account just means that we would do it in-house. So any further questions or discussion on that?
Yeah, I think, I noticed something in his writing. I think, and as a citizen, it was, there's a particular for DBs and MBEs, which is always good for minority-based and women, you know, to get some of these projects. I think that's always a good deal. So if you know anybody out there, that'd be good. Try to spread the love a little bit.
Yeah, absolutely, and also to stay within the law.
Within the laws. Right.
We have requirements to make sure that we can do our best to get quotes from them. Okay. Good comment. Any others? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor of rejecting the one quote, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay. Motion carries. Thank you, council. Item 15 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope vote to award employee uniforms lease for the City of Fairhope to Centos Corporation. This lease is available for direct procurement through Omni Partners Contract, which has already been nationally bid, and therefore does not have to be let out for bid, with a total estimated cost of $86,610. I'll entertain a motion to award the lease.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I did want to ask, what had we been paying prior for these? I think this is being done slightly different, maybe? Didn't we have purchases prior? Kim, can you answer that?
We had a bid with a local vendor here that could not fulfill the uniforms requirements, and so we went out and looked at Centos. And when you look at the cost, when we're replacing a pair of pants every year, comparing it to if we leased this, the lease is much cheaper. I don't have the rates that you're asking for, but I can get that information for you.
If you know that they're cheaper. I thought that we had had that discussion, and you told me that. I just wanted to be sure. I had Councilman Boone ask me that earlier today, but I was unavailable all day and never got around to getting with you. So you're not exactly sure what we paid for the uniform purchases last time?
No, but we compared, we compared, looking at if you had to buy that same pair of pants every year and then leasing them, the breaking point is two years. So if you're getting two years' use out of one pair of pants, then that's our break, that's our break-even point compared to doing the lease program. Was the beauty of the lease program is if they lose weight and they need some, need more pants, they gain weight, they need more pants, or the same way with shirts, whatever, the lease program actually works out better than us having to, you know, we have, we hope, we have some healthy people going on our wellness programs and lose some weight, and so if it was the case, we'd have to buy them new pants. This way, we can exchange out pants. So we were just breaking down the numbers, and this program, they could fulfill a variety of uniforms for us.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Kim. I love your optimism on that.
Thanks, Kim.
Hope everybody gets on board with that.
Wellness.
Including myself.
At Christmas time, for best.
Okay. I got a motion in a second. Okay. Any other questions or comments, council? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor of awarding the employee uniform lease to Centos through Omni Partners Contract, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay. Motion carries. Thank you, council. Item 16 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope vote to procure the Kronos timekeeping software upgrade and authorize the mayor to sign the statement of work and order, and order form. I'm not sure about that. The total cost for the upgrade will be $21,240. This is a sole source services through Kronos and authorizes a procurement based upon the option allowed by the Code of Alabama. I'll entertain a motion to procure the Kronos timekeeping upgrade, software upgrade.
So moved.
Second. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay. Jeff's available if we need it. Okay. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Okay. The motion carries. Thank you. Item 17, also related to timekeeping, is that the City of Fairhope vote to procure the Kronos timekeeping system maintenance annual renewal for December 30th, 2020 to December 29th, 2021 for the IT Department, with a cost not to exceed $24,267.3. It's also a sole source service through Kronos and authorized procurement based on the option allowed by the Code of Alabama. I'll entertain a motion to procure the timekeeping system maintenance annual renewal.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Okay. Motion carries. Removed items 18 and 19 from the agenda. Item 20 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope approves the procurement for roof repairs to the former USA building, or they were leasing it, it's always been our building, at 10 North Summit Street, damaged by Hurricane Sally. This was sent to eight contractors as well as multiple state agencies for MBE and DEB consideration. The city received two informal quotes and one formal quote, awards the project to Roof Doctors of Alabama in the amount of $27,650. An insurance claim has been filed, and once the claim is done, the FEMA claim will be submitted. Introduce a motion to award the roof repairs to Roof Doctors.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay. Motion carries. Thank you, council. Item 21 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope approves the procurement for Roof Doctors to the Haven Building damaged by Hurricane Sally, was also sent to eight contractors as well as multiple state agencies for the MBE and DEB consideration. City received one informal quote and one formal quote, and awards the project to Roof City received one informal quote and one formal quote and awards the project to Roof Doctors of Alabama in the amount of $12,600. An insurance claim has also been filed for this, and once the claim is done, the FEMA claim will be submitted. So I'll entertain a motion to award this procurement to Roof Doctors.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Richard is here to answer any questions, if you should have them. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item 22 is a resolution. The City of Fairhope approves the procurement for roof doctors to the Tennis Center damaged by Hurricane Sally. Also sent to eight contractors and multiple state agencies for MBE and DEB consideration. City received one informal quote and one formal quote and awards the project to Roof Doctors of Alabama in the amount of $16,450. An insurance claim has been filed, and once the claim is done, the FEMA claim will be submitted. Richard's here to answer any questions. I'll entertain a motion to award this procurement to Roof Doctors.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item 23 is a resolution. The City of Fairhope vote to approve an unbudgeted procurement for two Lucas chest compression systems for the rescue trucks for the Fairhope Volunteer Fire Department from Stryker Medical as sole source provider in the United States and Canada for the Lucas system. This will be funded through the CARES Act with a cost of $30,456.04 and can help with safety during the COVID-19 pandemic. I'll entertain a motion for procurement of the Lucas system.
So moved.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor of the procurement to be reimbudgeted by the CARES Act, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item 24 is a resolution. The City of Fairhope vote to approve unbudgeted procurement for a speed monitor full trailer with three-line message display for the Police Department from MPH Industries as sole source provider for the speed monitor full trailer, Full Matrix Trailer Systems, also to be funded through the CARES Act with a cost of $21,400, and will assist in reminding citizens of Fairhope, as well as the many tourists visiting on a daily basis, to practice safety in relation to the COVID-19 pandemic. I'll entertain a motion for the purchase of the display.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Officer Nolte is standing by if you have any questions. Okay, hearing no further discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item 25 is a resolution. The City Council approves the selection of OCV LLC for professional services for a three-year service agreement for custom iPhone and Android apps set up, maintenance, and support and other services for the City of Fairhope and authorizes Mayor Sherri Sullivan to execute the three-year agreement with a total cost of $31,540. This is an unbudgeted service fee that will be funded through the CARES Act. And I believe this was discussed in the work session. Jessica is here to answer any questions, should you have them. All right, if not, I will entertain a motion to approve the selection for the app.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item number 26, a resolution. The City of Fairhope approves the procurement of annual flower plantings for the fiscal year 2021 for the Public Works Department for landscaping throughout the city. The flower plantings will be procured from CJ, I hope I get this right, Rue Garoc and Sons, Billy Harrison Associates and Shore Acres Plant Farm Incorporated, with a total amount estimated at $103,442.90. I know that y'all probably discussed this, so I'll entertain a motion for the procurement of the flowers.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And since I missed that discussion, I just want to ask, did we have to purchase any additional plantings because of our greenhouses being damaged, or is this pretty typical for...
This particularly is just getting that part of the budget passed because we got to order flowers for next year. So that's what this is, is keeping us on track.
Okay. Did the amount change because of damage to our greenhouses?
We, so far, so good. I do know that we're going to be buying poinsettias that we were not able to propagate ourselves, but I think we've got that covered, so.
All right, appreciate it. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Thirty-two thousand under budget.
Under?
Yeah. Okay, very good. All right, hearing no further discussion. All those in favor of the procurement, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item 27 is a resolution. The City Council approves and adopts the recommendations for the public works restructuring and reclassification as follows. Remove the Facilities Maintenance Department under the current Public Works Street Department. You can see the organizational chart in your binder. Retitle the new division, the Streets and Facilities Maintenance Department, and reclassify the Facilities Maintenance Supervisor. Grade 25 salary to a Facilities Maintenance Crew Leader at a grade 22 hourly, and will report to the Streets and Facilities Maintenance Supervisor and the updated uniform job description for the Facilities Maintenance Crew Leader. And we should have that uniform job description in our package. And we do. We do have... I know that was a mouthful. We do have Richard Johnson here to discuss any of those changes. Should you have questions? So I'll entertain a motion to approve and adopt those recommendations.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay. And I know that Mr. Johnson could discuss that, and Mayor Sullivan, I'm assuming that these are changes that you wanted and recommend as well?
Yes, we've discussed it.
Okay, very good. Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, the motion carries. Thank you, counsel. All right, item 28 is a resolution to authorize a one-time supplemental pay increase for the city employees. You'll see that in your package. This is the same that we have approved for the ninth time, I guess, since I've been on the council, so.
Very good.
It's giving people up to $100 based on the amount of time that they've spent with the city, up to a maximum of $100, I believe, right?
Maximum of $240.
$240.
Maximum $240. I'm sorry, I'm looking at the part-time. The maximum's $100. Okay. Does anybody have any questions before we ask for a motion? Okay, I'll ask for a motion to approve the one-time supplemental pay increase.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, the motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item 29 is a resolution. The Fairhope City Council accepts the gift of artwork to the City of Fairhope from Natalie, is that Qatar?
Yeah.
Okay, it's known as Pier, a 48-inch by 48-inch oil painting on canvas valued at $1,850. Sounds pretty nice. I'll entertain a motion to accept the gift.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the gift. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item 30 is a resolution. Certain items are declared surplus, and the mayor and city treasurer hereby authorize and direct it to dispose of the personal property owned by the City of Fairhope by one of the following methods. Receiving bids for such properties via gov deals sold to the highest bidder, provided Howard that the city council should have the authority to reject all bids when it's an opinion it deems the bids to be less than adequate consideration for the personal property. Number two, sold for scrap or recycle at the highest offered value, or number three, disposal via the landfill. And you should have a list of those items. Pretty short list this time, counsel.
Mr. President, I'd like to add to that list.
Yeah, most of the toys. What's that?
Go ahead. I'd like to add also that we have the option to donate some of the items to a charitable cause.
Yeah, that's a great question.
What would be the bicycles? Yeah, most of them are like scooters and razors, like little toys.
Yeah, I believe that we've done that in the past, right? Was it last year, didn't we?
We tried to last year. I think there was nothing of value, but this year, there seems to be some.
Yeah. Okay, do you have an organization you want to donate those to? Or do we want to just authorize the mayor to fund the charity?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second? We do, right?
No, I added to it. We didn't get to that part.
Okay, yeah, okay, we did add that. Okay, I was going to thought we were in discussion phase. So I would ask you, if you want to do that, then you can say, okay, number three, disposal via landfill, or four, authorize the mayor to give to a charitable organization of her determination. You got that, clerk? Does that sound good?
Yes.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the amended resolution.
On the amended.
Okay. Did we... Was that material enough to... Do we need a motion to amend that resolution?
We do.
The fact that we didn't ever make the motion, we could make the motion as amended. Is that correct?
Yes, you just did a motion to amend. Now you can do a motion to amend, approve the amendment.
Okay, so I think we do need to do that.
Yes.
So let me entertain a motion to amend the resolution as stated.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of amending the motion, amending the resolution as submitted, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, now on the amended resolution. I'll go ahead and entertain that motion now for passage.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the amended resolution. Any discussion on that?
No, I think Boone is right on track. That's what I was going to ask as well. So we're having the same heart. Since I looked at the list, I saw it was all toys. I think we can do better than putting it in the landfill. So, but that's a great...